We're ready?
Okay, I will call to order the October 9th, 2025 Planning Commission meeting. Will everyone please stand and will Commissioner Gazano lead us in the flag sleeve? Thank you. Staff, roll call, please.
All Commissioners are present this evening.
Okay, public comments. This is the time we take public comments on items that are not on the agenda, that are generally within the purview of the Planning Commission. If you wish to speak, please keep your comments to three minutes or less. Are there any public comments? Seeing none. Thank you. All right, moving on to the next item. Request for continuances? Staff, are there requests for continuances?
No, we have no requests for continuances tonight.
Okay. Consent items. Item number one, the minutes of September 18th, 2025. Do we have a... Would anyone from the audience like to comment on the minutes from September 18th, 2025 meeting? See, nobody. Thank you. Call for a motion.
I read the minutes and I'll make a motion to approve.
Their comments, too?
The comments with Mr. Moser's comments as well.
Second?
I'll second.
Call for vote? Okay.
The motion carries 6-0 with Commissioner Reed abstaining.
Okay, item number two, General Plan Update: Introduction of Land Use Element and Safety Element. It's PA 2022-080. This is a citywide item. This is a study session for all of us to become more informed about the general plan and the process. The Commission will not be taken in action tonight, but we may be providing direction to staff and we will take public comments. Staff, please proceed with your presentation.
Chair Harris, if I may just preface the item. This is, as you mentioned, it's a high-level discussion. There may be some areas when this is brought back for individual specific comments where we will evaluate specific conflicts. And so we would want to ask that the conversation this evening be at a high level so that we can evaluate any potential conflicts when it comes forward.
Thank you.
Thank you, Londe. Good evening, Chair Harris, members of the Commission. My name's Jaime Morillo. I'm the Acting Director of Community Development. I'll be presenting this item tonight. I do just want to note that Ben Zadiva, our Planning Manager, he's the project manager for the General Plan Update. He's been doing an extraordinary job on this project, so I just want to make sure he gets the credit. Unfortunately, he couldn't be here tonight. But for tonight's presentation, the main goal is to provide the Commission an update on where we're at with the General Plan Update and then highlight two draft elements that we're seeking input from the Commission on, and those are the land use element and the safety element. So just really big, quick background on a general plan. And as Commissioners, I know you're all familiar with the general plan, but to provide a little bit of background, typically what you hear about a general plan is kind of what you see on the screen. And a lot of people think it's a blueprint for the future, a vision for the future, kind of a framework for decision-making. And it's really all those statements. More technically, it's a framework for decision-making that really guides, that includes goals and policies that guides development for the future. It is state-mandated, but it's not just related to development. It does look at roads, park needs. It also focuses on topics such as safety, noise, harbor, et cetera. So our general plan was last updated in 2006, so it's almost 20 years old. It consists of 10 elements. So under state law, there's only seven required elements of a general plan. That includes a safety element, natural resources, land use, circulation, housing, noise, recreation. However, due to the bay and kind of the unique environment that's in Newport Beach and the values that are important to our residents, we also have a harbor and bay element, arts and culture element, and historic resources element. We first started off updating the general plan in 2019. However, once we received our extraordinary housing mandate from the state, we pivoted. We kind of put a pause on the comprehensive update. We focused on updating our housing element and circulation element in order to meet our state mandates. But now that we have a certified housing element, we start working on the comprehensive update to the general plan again back in 2023. And so, as I mentioned, the housing element, circulation element are complete. However, we have these remaining elements that we are actively working on and seeking community input as we move forward with the update to the general plan. Do you want to just point out that the general plan is intended to be a resident-led general plan update effort? We want to make sure all the goals and policies really reflect the values of our residents. And so our City Council created two Brown Act committees. The first is General Plan Update Steering Committee. This is led by former Mayor Nancy Gardner, and their purpose is really steer the ship on the general plan update that ensures we have appropriate public outreach with this effort, oversee and direct the work of our General Plan Advisory Committee, and then they provide regular updates to the City Council. The General Plan Advisory Committee comprises of 24 members of our citizens with various expertise, knowledge, and backgrounds. I do want to highlight that Mr. Moser is one of our General Plan Advisory Committee members and has provided extensive work and input on these efforts as well. But their task is to really review and guide the changes to the general plan, the goals and policies, and make recommendations to our steering committee. The approach is really four phases. We're currently in the tail end of Phase Two. So the first phase is what we started back in 2023 with a lot of background research, reviewing the current elements, that initial public outreach. And then the policy development is where we are currently at in Phase Two. Still, a lot of community outreach and a lot of work by our General Plan Advisory Committee and our steering committee. I just want to highlight, so Phase One, the community outreach was really robust. We really went out to the community with our consultants and city staff, including our G-PAC members. We attended a number of pop-up events. We had digital engagement. So there's interactive input and engagement, as you can see on the lower left-hand side of the slide. Residents can go in, put input on, you know, what they value in the city and various comments. There's pictures from the mayor's egg hunt and the farmer's market. So we really went out to the community to find out what was important to our residents. Phase Two was a more deep-dive engagement. We invited the community into various community workshops and really start working on the formulation of the draft goals and policies. And here's some photos from some of those community workshops. And so for tonight, what we're seeking input from the Commission on is really two elements, the land use element and the safety element. But we've also been presenting various draft elements to other boards and commissions throughout the city. For example, Arts Commission is reviewing the arts and cultural element as well as the historic element. Our Parks, Beaches, and Recreation Committee, or Commission, is reviewing the recreation element and harbor, bay, beaches element. But the formulation of these elements really started back in 2023, as you can see on the slide. And with all the community input, input from the General Plan Advisory Committee is essentially what created the draft elements that are before you today and then what we're going to be proposing to the community. So I'm not going to go into too much detail on each of the elements, but for the safety element, this is one of the very state-mandated elements of a general plan. And second to the housing element, it does include a number of very specific requirements under state law. It also requires review by the California Board of Forestry and Fire Protection, which they've already reviewed this draft and found it to be compliant with the state requirements. It includes requirements for evacuation preparedness, and a new requirement is climate change and resiliency. And so what's new in this safety element is it does address severe heat, and so there's policies in place for preparing for warmer days. So it talks about cooling centers for residents on those extremely hot days and policies to provide more shade trees throughout the city. It includes more robust policies for coastal resilience to deal with sea level rise. The General Plan Advisory Committee and a lot of community input we received is evacuation is a serious concern, as you see from various fires and events we've had. And so consideration is that Peninsula and Bebo Island, there's really only one route for evacuation. And so there's an emphasis on non-automobile options for evacuation. So that includes like scooters and also the potential for boats to help people evacuate. Updated fire maps and then policies to address aviation hazards. And then for the land use element, again, state-mandated element, in terms of state requirements, there's a requirement, we can't allow for reduction in residential density of what we've already identified in our housing element. And then there's a requirement for consistency with the local coastal program. For the most part, the land use element is a refresh of the existing land use element, but it is condensed and consolidated to make it more user-friendly and more effective. It also includes new policies to help balance planning in various areas of the city to address the new housing opportunities that were created through our housing element, focus areas and overlay, refreshes opportunities for change that have been identified, and now includes Bebo Island with some additional policies, increases opportunities for open space amenities, and then it now includes a new policy to allow for staff to administer updates to the development limit tables to ensure transparency and more accurate information. And so the key topics in the land use element are kind of these topics listed, and I'll go through an example within each topic. So for development limit capacities, again, the land use element illustrates, you know, the various land use restrictions throughout the city, but it also establishes development limits. And so we have something that's unique in the city called an anomaly table that has very specific density and intensity limits. However, what's in the 2006 general plan is just a snapshot in time of what was allowed at that time, but it doesn't really reflect transfers of development rights that have occurred, conversions of uses, and it's not accurate picture of what's allowed on the various properties. And so this new policy will allow staff to update the table to ensure more accuracy and transparency for the public and for property owners. In terms of defining neighborhood and land use characteristics, for example, these are policies related to the industrial areas, and these policies really collectively would support and encourage re-energizing the city's industrial areas with new uses and to help integrate the new residential opportunities we're creating, such as the Monrovia Project we approved at the last Planning Commission meeting. So it has a lot more policies about integrating and ensuring compatibility with these uses. There's a section that's related to opportunities for change, and it goes into various focus areas throughout the city. One area is Mariners Mile. There's a lot of input from the G-PAC and the Subcommittee. Just updating and refreshing the policies applicable to Mariners Mile. Coyote Canyon is another area that this is a brand-new opportunity. It's going to be a big change for the community in Newport Coast. And so we're adding, well, the proposal's add a lot more policies to ensure high-quality development and planning and for the redevelopment of that site and to ensure that open space and trail came activities provided. And then for the airport area, as development has occurred, there's a real need to ensure that we can create a more cohesive community up there that the city's proud of. And so it sets forth the policy direction to create a specific plan. And so that's going to be an endeavor the city's working towards in the next year to also ensure that, you know, future change is in plan in an appropriate manner. We have a policy regarding infrastructure coordination. So as we, areas start changing with difference in land uses, there's emphasis for, you know, the planning to coordinate with other departments such as Public Works to ensure the infrastructure's in place. And then also policies related to ensuring that there's adequate city staff and embracing technology to improve our permit processing. Then lastly, just touch upon inter-agency coordination. There's been updates to former Banning Ranch to now reference Randall Preserve. And also something to note is all the city has a comprehensive or certified local coastal program. It doesn't include Newport Coast. The Newport Coast local coastal program is still under the county's jurisdiction, and so this sets forth the policy to direct staff to work and get the entire Newport Coast within the city's certified LCP. And then lastly, more for the benefit of the public, how to get involved. We definitely want community input. And so, you know, we encourage the community to attend our steering committee meetings as well as our General Plan Advisory Committee meetings. All those meetings, our Brown Act meetings, they've been recorded. And so we have YouTube videos on this website. And so for anyone who's a planning nerd that really wants to binge-watch YouTube videos and get down, they're all available. We are looking to have a community open house both on the 21st and 22nd of October. There'll be an in-house meeting as well as virtual. And then anyone who's interested can always contact with city staff. And then I have Ben Zadiva's number up here. So that concludes the presentation for today. So again, the recommendation is for the Planning Commission to receive and file the two draft elements. And then we are seeking feedback from the Commission. And so we have two optional, like, recommendations for the Commission. So we are, there's opportunity to establish an ad hoc if that's desired, or we can accept Commission comments just collectively at the November 6th meeting. And then just next steps, City Staff is going to release the draft elements for public review starting tomorrow. And then again, we have two open houses that we're inviting the public to on October 21st and 22nd. And then what we're looking for is collective comments from the community as well as all the various boards and commissions by November 17th. And once we have all those collective comments, staff's going to work with our consultant and the G-PAC and the steering committee to start really refining these draft elements a little bit more based on all the feedback. And then ultimately, we'll come back to the Planning Commission for your formal review and recommendation. And the Commission will review the entire general plan, including all the various elements for recommendation to the City Council. And so the goal is to hopefully adopt the update by the middle of 2026. So that concludes my presentation.
Thank you, Mr. Maria. Okay, so we're, just so we're clear, guys, or Commissioners, we can obviously ask questions now, give some feedback now. We'll take public comments. Then we can create an ad hoc committee if we want to dig in more. Either way, this is coming back to us on the 6th of November, which we can then individually give more input after it's been further baked by the public. So we can, you know, file and receive and file now and send it off, or we can, you know, create the ad hoc. So I just want to be clear, but for now, if we have questions or input we want to give, feel free. Anyone? Rosie, anything?
Well, I heard that we're going to keep this high level.
Yes.
So in the spirit of keeping it high level, I suppose we should receive and file. But I do think instead of having an ad hoc committee, it's always interesting to see the different perspectives from all of us. And once this comes back in its new form, I would recommend that we have a chance to, for all of us to weigh in.
Okay, well, let's hear public comments first and then we can, you know, if there's no questions right now for staff? Okay. Okay, moving on to public comments. Does anyone from the audience want to comment on this item? Moser?
Chair Harris and members of the Planning Commission, my name is Jim Moser. As Acting Director Morillo said, I am one of the 24 members of the General Plan Advisory Committee, but speaking here as an individual. I think the general plan in its current state is very much a work in progress and very imperfect in its current state, speaking as an individual. And I think your input to it will be very valuable. I did want to mention something that I don't think was in the presentation that might aid you in reviewing what you have to review before you. If you look at a somewhat, well, first of all, the land use element draft that you have is a little more recent product than the safety element draft that you have. And if you look at a somewhat random example of page 115, which is the beginning of the policies of land use element, you will see some of the policies, like the first one on handwritten page 15, LU 1.3, transfer of development rights, has in parentheses after it, policy LU 4.2. The parenthetical notation means that that was taken from the current general plan. And so that policy is just copied over. And I'm sure all of you are very familiar with the current general plan because most applications that come before you, you have to make a finding that they're consistent with that plan. So that one is copied. The next one, LU 1.4, there is no notation after that. That means that's a new policy that was not in the general plan. And then you'll see more that were copied. And then you will see one at the bottom that was adapted. So the language has been changed from what it was previously. What you don't see here is much of this was kind of compiled and rearranged by the consultant who is working on this, who I could say is a person I don't think is totally familiar with Newport Beach perhaps as much as we are. And some of the policies that are in the current general plan and the current land use element are not copied over into this. And why they were not copied in is not always obvious because a lot of attention back in 2006 was put in, putting them in the plan. And I think it was the intention by the time it came to you here at the Planning Commission, Jaime has highlighted new things that are in here, which you can see. I think there is intention, it would also be pointed out what was taken out of the current general plan, but at the moment, that's a little bit of guesswork for you. Also, at the end of each policy are the little parenthetical notations, IMP 2.1, 5.1. Those are references to the Implementation Plan Chapter of the general plan. The G-PAC has not reviewed that at all, nor has the consultant made any changes to that. So those are changes to the current implementation plan for the current general plan, and they may not be totally relevant or correct for the new one, but that's what they are. And then unfortunately, when you're looking at the safety element, it's going to have none of those notations because it's an older, well, it will have the implementation notations. It will not tell you if something is copied, new, or missing. So that's an exercise. And so anyway, I think my time is up, but your input will be much appreciated by me and I think by the G-PAC, and will be integrated with the public comments coming from the workshops. So, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Moser. Any other speakers? Seeing none. Thank you for your comments, Mr. Moser. Very helpful. All right, I'll bring this to the Commission. Our staff, any comments?
I would just add, if I may, I certainly don't want to stymie any discussion. And I just wanted to, so if Commissioner Rosin does want to provide some, you know, general discussions, and if this ends up going into the discussion that involves an area where perhaps you live in and/or have a business interest, then we can certainly pause for a moment and allow that of an individual to recuse. So it's certainly not my goal to stymie any discussion at all here tonight, but we can certainly delve down this path and see if he has some general thoughts and comments he wants to provide.
Okay. Commissioner Rosin?
Yeah, that was not my intent, but I do appreciate Mr. Moser's comment in regard to how these elements are tied together from the original. And I did not catch that, and that was very helpful. So, and it actually makes a lot of sense, and it explains why some of my comments are in here. And so I think it might be better that this document be more fully baked before we decide to weigh in on any particular item, my comment at least for now.
Mr. Leavitt?
Thank you, Chair Harris. If the document is still in flux, I have one thing that bumped me on my reading. It was the inclusion of environmental justice on handwritten page 40. I, it struck me as an unnecessary political buzzword. And if we're planning for decades in the future, it seems to me it'll date this era, and I'd rather use language that is timeless and clear than something like that. So that would be my only comment at this point.
Commissioner?
Going back to Mr. Moser's comments, I found it very interesting that if there's things that are removed from the current land use element of the general plan, it'd be nice to maybe point those out so we know what is being recommended to be excluded. So that's my, would be my only comment.
Any other comments? Commissioner Rosin again?
Since we're going to get specific on environmental justice, I too found that a polarizing statement. And so I was going to recommend we use the terminology "community-based environmental concerns."
I beat you to it. I got credit for finding that one, okay.
Okay, okay, okay. Glad we cleared that up. Okay, I just had some high-level thoughts where I think, especially on the safety and the safety elements, if we could, I don't know if there, I don't want to create a backlog of work on this thing, but if we could also either add some priority to them, or maybe that's the essence of it, but also how would you fund these things? There's some great ideas and some, oh, we could do this, we could do this, but there's no mention, or often no mention, on how these could possibly be funded or where that would come from. I like the focus for like fire, undergrounding. I don't know, I thought there's some cool conflicts there with fire areas and density. I'd love to hear more later how, you know, we handle that and, you know, what the, with builder's remedy and things, and if those come to conflict, how that works. I know there's some cool things for fire, detecting, drone use, things of that nature, I thought would be pretty neat. That were kind of ideas that could be added. But anyway, I'll add most of these. On the land use, I thought there's a lot of clarity added to these things and with some of these ideas. And definitely, at least, should help reinvigorate some areas and add people, perhaps help with Rena. That's all I have.
Any others? Okay. Okay, we will file and receive and move on to the next item. Okay, item number three, motions for reconsideration. Are there any motions for reconsideration? None? Okay, Director Morillo, the item number four, report by the Community Development Director and a request for matters which a Planning Commission member would like place on a future agenda. Maybe we have the Director's Report, future agenda items?
Yes, so for the next Planning Commission meeting, we have two items. One's going to be a development agreement between the city and the Irvine Company related to a 700-unit rental project up at the corner of MacArthur and campus. And then the other item is a restaurant expansion in Corona del Mar. So those will be the two items for the next agenda. And I did just want to note, related to the Seoul Mexican Cuchilla Restaurant, which was reviewed at the last Planning Commission meeting, the applicant did withdraw and and surrender their approval. That was granted. I think there was some misunderstanding about live entertainment and what that entails, and so they are not prepared to implement that approval, so they've surrendered it, which means their existing conditional use permit and outdoor dining permit will remain in effect, and they are going to process a new application that'll come back to the Commission at a future date.
Okay. Commissioner requests any future items? I don't see none. Does anyone from the audience want to comment on these items? Mr. Moser? Okay, item number five, Requests for Excused Absences. Are there any requests for excused absences, Commissioners?
On the next meeting. I'll be out October 23rd.
Okay, all right. We're adjourned.